All right, good evening. I will call this meeting to order. Today is our July regular meeting. It is Thursday, July 20th, 2023. We had a four o'clock work session earlier. It is now 5:30 PM for our regular meeting. We are in the central building, second floor conference room. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I just want to share that Board member Grant Shepherd and our two student members are all on a mission trip out in Colorado together. So we can blame Grace Lutheran for not looking at our schedule and taking away their fuel from the table. But yeah, they're all having a great time. So, all right, continuing on. Can I get a motion for approving tonight's agenda? I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
First and a second, a discussion. Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Recognition of visitors. We don't have anyone that needs to speak during an open forum, and we did not receive any emails. Just letting everyone know who's watching at home, you can always come and speak during our open forum, or you can send an email to wasica district at gmail dot com, and we will read it at the meeting. Then tonight, we need to do some organization of the school board, beginning with the designation of our medical facility. Can I get someone to make a motion for that recommendation?
A motion to designate the medical facility.
Second.
Oh, we need to name it?
Yeah. Just say.
Do you want me to read that?
Yeah, just move to, yeah, move, designate.
Recommendation, move to designate Wasika Mayo Clinic as school medical facility for the 2023, 2024 school year.
And then who was the second on that? Adida. All right, first and a second. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, we will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for the consideration for resolution for investments in payment of claims?
Do you have to read it?
Yes.
Let's see. The administration is recommending the adoption of the following resolution. Mr. Matthew Moline, Director Business Services, will be authorized to make payment prior to board approval of claims that cannot be deferred until the next board meeting without loss to the District of Discount Privileges. And furthermore, Mr. Moline is authorized to initiate and transact electronic fund transfers for the purpose of investment of excess monies and for payment of bond principal and interests. Said authority is delegated pursuant to Minnesota Statute 1979, Section 471.38, subdivision three, and Minnesota Statutes 1979, Section 123.35, subdivision 15.
And that is your motion?
Yep.
I'll second. Thank you. First and a second. Any discussion? I feel like we're making Mr. Moline official here.
Mm-hmm.
All right. All right, if there's no discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. And then a motion for item C. So this one, we've seen a single motion, and it considers all of those services, correct?
Correct.
Do we need to read what all the services are? Would anyone like to make a motion for item C?
I'd make a motion for item C to consider of consideration of support services.
I'll second that. First and a second. Any discussion? All right. No discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. And then, can I get a motion for item D in this one? You need to make a motion and then read the resolution.
I got it.
Okay.
Resolution for machine sign signatures. I, Dave Dunn, Clerk of the School Board of Independent School District Number 829, do hereby certify that at a regular meeting of the School Board of the Independent School District duly and regularly called and held at the central building, second floor conference room in Wasika, Minnesota, on the 20th day of July 2023, there being a quorum of said board present, the following was unanimously passed, as appears from the records of said school district and is now in full force and effect. Be it resolved that the Keene Bank of Wasika, the Minwest Bank of Wasika, and MSD Liquid Asset Fund slash US Bank has designated of this corporation B and is hereby requested authorized and directed to honor checks, drafts, and other orders with payment of money drawn in this school district's name, including those drawn to the individual order of any person or persons whose name or names appear thereon as signer or signers thereof when bearing or purporting to bear the facsimile signatures of any three of the following: Chairman Julie Anderson, Clerk Dave Dunn, Treasurer Grant Shepherd. The Minwest Bank, Keene Bank, and MSD Liquid Asset Fund slash US Bank shall be entitled to honor and to charge this school district for such checks, drafts, and other orders regardless of by whom or by what means the facsimile signatures or signatures thereon may have been affixed thereto. If such facsimile signature or signatures resemble the facsimile specimens duly certified to or filed with Minwest Bank, the Keene Bank of Wasika, or the MSD Liquid Asset slash US Bank by the clerk or other officer of this school district. Be it further resolved that any and all resolutions heretofore adopted by the School Board of this school district and certified to the Minwest Bank, Keene Bank, or MSD Liquid Asset Fund slash US Bank as governing the duration of this school district account or counts with it, be and hereby continue in full force and effect except as the same may be supplemented or modified by the foregoing part of the resolution. In witness where in witness whereof I have hereunto subscribed, my name is Clerk of said school district, this 20th day of July 2023, Dave Dunn, School Board Clerk. That's my motion.
All right, we have a first. Can I get a second? Did you say second? All right, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? Do you want to comment on how Dave read that? I'm just kidding. You did a good job.
I keep waiting for you to say, "Could you read that again?"
All right, if there's no discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Moving on then to payment of claims. I had the privilege to review the claims from the month of June, and I make a motion to recommend action of payment for these claims. Additional May accounts payable in the amount of $12,590.41. June accounts payable, $1,691,625.14. Payroll, $871,195.37. May dental, $15,318.29. And June dental, $16,593.38. Thank you. A first and a second from Adida. Any discussion?
The only thing I would point out, because it's a little different than sometimes you see, is because we had such an early June meeting.
Okay.
That's why you see additional May payments on this particular board meeting.
Gotcha.
That's, we haven't seen that in a couple months, because typically, if the board meeting is late enough, we have all those previous months' accounts payable. In this case, we had a few extra that had rolled over. So that's what, that's the purpose of that board.
Yeah, that is unusual to have that additional accounts payable. Yeah. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda? I'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. All right, moving on then to information items, and we begin with our superintendent report from Mr. Hudson.
Certainly, thank you. And thank you for the time this evening. Talk a little bit about two topics I'm going to bring to our attention this evening. The first is some discussion, a follow-up from our last work session on facilities. And as you recall from our last work session, you know, we talked quite, quite at length about what our options could be, what our plans would be for facility planning. And we know that we, from that work session, you know, there just was not confidence from the board to move forward with the plan as presented, as we talked about at that time. Hence, you'll, you don't see a vote for that, particularly this evening, because we, we gathered from that conversation, we had some more work to do before we could move forward with anything with that. So, would you mind passing those sheets out now? So, I've been thinking about what some of the options could be for our district to move forward from a sense of, we talked last, at the work session about, you know, what's the next step? We need to have some direction of where we're going to go. And I think that we have really, my perspective is, we have two different options we could proceed with right now that I think the board should consider. And again, this is not an action item this evening, because this is just for your information. The LTFM plan that Mr. Moline is presenting now to you, for the purpose of tonight's conversation, for me, is, number one, it's to fill the backfill if you, should you want it, when it comes to the detail of the LTFM plan you'll approve later in the agenda. But for this conversation, what I'm noticing is, as we get further into years three through 10 of this, of this LTFM plan, we're noting some negative numbers would be our balance if we were to do all the projects provided in those years. We know we can't have a negative LTFM balance. So we know we'll be moving some of those things out if we can't get to all those dollar values, as well as the unbudgeted column, which is the far right, which are the things that just currently aren't, aren't in the budget. And for the board's information, I know it's a lot of small print, but for the board's information, what brings those, those particular years to negative numbers are large projects like a $600,000 roofing project or a $1 million roofing project. The standard every, every year cyclical, cyclical projects are not what's causing those negative numbers. The unbudgeted column is primarily the big pictured items that we've talked about with Hartley. You know, the galvanized piping, the pneumatic controls, switching to hot water for heating, those sort of things. So that's where those dollar values come from. For the purpose of my discussion tonight is just reassuring the board that we're going to, in the, in the not-too-distant future, have to make a decision to do something above and beyond the LTFM plan to help remediate some of these, some of these deficits that are coming over the next few years. So after a conversation last, two weeks ago, I really thought about what our next steps could be. And I really feel like the board has two options they could consider right now. The first is, we could consider doing, doing a survey. And if, and we talked about last week, two weeks ago, about some major hiccups with the current plan, some concerns, whether it's traffic pattern, all those students over at the one, the one site, the cost, obviously. We talked at length about those things being a challenge to our community. We talked about our last survey, and our last survey did show a slight preference for the remodeling version versus the K6 model. The flaw with that survey, as I dug into it, is there's two parts to that. Do you like the plan better, or did you like that it was $2 million cheaper? It was really, in the survey, we didn't really delineate that out of what those people's preferences were. And so, one option for the board to consider is to do an additional survey specific to the plan as presented with the K6 plan. We would do it as a district, so it would not be additional cost to the district. I would create essentially an information packet with, here's, here's the, here's what we're considering, here's the positives, here's what the board has considered as challenges to work through, here's what the cost would be. We could roll it out around back-to-school time, and we have a lot of people in our buildings. We have a lot of people paying attention to our schools. So we're in our social media, in our media platforms, get it out there, and get some feedback from our community. Because one of the things that I picked up from our work session last time was, we think that's a major concern, and it very well may be, so we should probably find out. And so if the board, if, if the community responds favorably to that plan, then there's some information that we have to say, okay, maybe this is something we should consider moving forward with. And I would say that that's, that's a pretty good sign for us to say we should move forward. However, if the, if the community does not respond favorably, that also tells us, okay, we have to respond. We just talked about public engagement in our work session, and efficient operations. And if our community's not supportive of that plan, we have to rethink. Because I think option number two becomes, becomes on the table either immediately at this point, if the board chooses not to proceed with the survey and say, no, I think this is the best plan, or if the survey comes back unfavorably, I think we get to this direction, which is investing some dollars into the current building through a small bond, because we don't have enough capacity to borrow against our LTFM or to do a capital facility bond. That'll only get us maybe two and a half, $3 million. So when you think about things we could do, we could do a small bond for, and I'm going to say maybe $6 million. Incorporates a lot of what we need to do to repair the current Hartley building. It doesn't do much to change the footprint or anything to change the footprint, but it does keep the building alive, it keeps the building functional. We know it's going to buy us a number of more years to get, the high school project goes away, as far as payment schedule goes, comes off our debt cycle, and then maybe, and I hate to say it, because we hate to think that long, but we're looking at probably 10 or 15 years then, thinking, okay, that would be the soonest we want to then re-engage the community on something like that. Because whether we ask for 36 million or 6 million, the community will remember that we asked. And so if we ask for a $6 million question, and let's say it passes, because the community's supportive of that, then we have now used some of our trust equity with the community, and we're not going to ask again in the next number of years for anything. So, but, but that does buy us some time, it keeps the building alive. Comment last time we talked was about this building and some of the conversations that have happened to it 25 and 30 years ago and how it sits now. So that certainly is an option for the board to consider. So my, there's no action to take tonight, but my recommendation, recommendation for the board to consider is, number one, would you like to engage the community and find out more about what the community thinks about our K6 option? Or would you like us to particularly flesh out the, the, that smaller bond option? What projects would we recommend? What would that dollar value be? And I think what I'm going to, what I'm going to propose is I come back to you on the August 3rd work session, I think it's August 3rd, right? Is our next work session with, I'll have both of those pieces of information. I'll have a copy of what the survey could look like, full packet, full presentation, as well as, as well as here's some of the recommended projects if we do a smaller bond. And so that the board could then, again, that's a work session, so no decision to be made, but the board can consider and think and, and direct us as an administrative team to move forward with that. Because I think we're at a place right now where just doing nothing and saying, we'll come back and review this in six months, we're not, we just talked about that in our three-year governance plan. I think we're past the point of being able to do that in good conscience, but maybe it's just a smaller thing. And so, as you review the plan, as you think that through, that's where I think we go next with that option. I did explore a little bit of, well, what if we just went back to our, build a new building at the Hartley site, and we're looking at, you know, the low 50s probably for that building, if we want, some of the things we want, you know? And so, we certainly could explore that option, but then it becomes a much more expensive option, which has been all along. And so, I'm kind of putting that again as a, as probably our last option behind some of the other options that are more affordable. So, questions, thoughts? How does that strike you? Anything right away? I think we were, I think our board has had a very healthy and positive conversation last time. Was very clear to me, we weren't quite sure where we wanted to go, but I thought that, that potentially that additional layer of community feedback could be helpful for UL's board to think that through. We know right now November's not an option. We, you know, unless we were voting to do something tonight, which we, we know obviously wasn't going to happen based on our, where the board's, where the board's conversation is at, our timeline won't be available. So we're looking at the spring or, or beyond, whatever the board decides to do with that. So, we have a little bit of time now to decide, and then hopefully come back early fall with, here's what we think we should do. But I'm going to keep bringing it, because I think we need to decide some direction at some point.
All right, so, so two things. You're basically proposing that you would, again, bring both of these ideas to our workshop for us to consider.
Right.
But in more detail.
In more detail, and I, because I don't think it, particularly all the stuff we've worked on so far, even tonight, I don't, that's not necessarily fair to the board to say, okay, here's, first time you may have heard these ideas.
Yeah.
Yeah, now pick one.
Yeah.
I may have a chance to think it through and think what that could look like, and, and it's not, it's not overly cumbersome for me to use all the materials that we've had to create a survey that we could share with the community. So I don't mind bringing that, and then the board can make a decision from there. But if you have some opportunity to give that some thought prior to our next work session, that could be helpful.
Okay. And then, in order for us to kind of think about these two ideas a little bit, could you give us just a 30-second reminder how to read this document, I guess? Just, especially since we have new people, and, and I, I always appreciate being reminded of these things as well.
Sure. So, starting with the top, where we talk about physical hazards and other hazardous materials and safety management, each year we build a plan that we do the, we call long-term facility maintenance in our buildings. And we get a budget for that each year from the state. The revenue sheet that you've seen attached to your packet is part of that with expenditures. And we do have to live within those, within those means. As we talk to MDE about this particular plan, you'll notice in fiscal, so probably the most helpful thing to do until you want to go through with the microscope is to go back, go to the very last page where you see the ending fund balance with that. And you see in fiscal year '24, we're projected to end with about a $375,000 fund balance, 184, 23. We get to 2027, and we're looking at about a $109,000 deficit for the projects that are currently on that year. We, we did talk to MDE about this, because we're not going to go deficit with LTFM, and they said, we understand this is a flexible document. We look at those two, three years that are closest to you, you're above, you're in the black on those years, we approve it. We recognize that by the time you get to those years, you're not pushing things out, we're pushing things back. And as you go through this document, you can see all the way to the right, that's highlighted in green in the upper right-hand corner, that's the summary of the unbudgeted things. So those are things that we know are on our radar, but there's just, they're not even in the plan anywhere right now. They're not even contributing to those deficits anywhere. And in this plan, so if you just look right up, there's some track and field work that, that could be done. There's some mill work needs to be done. On previous pages, you'll see the galvanized piping at Hartley. You'll see switching from steam to hot water at Hartley. Those are things that are not in the plan at this time, because there's no place to put them in the budget. Other items along the way will land there as the years move on with that. So, and then as, and as the board prioritizes those things, I mean, none of the things in the unbudgeted column have been deemed a priority enough to move into the plan to go into a deficit. Some of them are just too large to do so, and some, we just haven't felt like it was that prioritized yet. So that, does that help?
Yeah.
A little bit?
Yes.
I, I have a question, Julie. If you look on the very last page, the fourth page, starting in year 2027, with the exception of year, it looks like 2028, the ending fund balance of this is going to be in the red.
Correct.
Can you explain that?
Yeah, so if you go to the page before, you just flip back one page and go to the section 383, which is called Roofing Systems, you'll see, starting in 2029, you'll start to see our re-roofing adding on there. And those are primarily the big projects that would contribute to that deficit.
Okay. And those are scheduled around the warranties or the conditions?
Correct. They're scheduled on warranties.
Okay.
Correct, Colin?
That is correct.
Yeah.
So they're there because you need to have a place for them.
Right, because if we don't do them, we could forfeit our warranty.
Yeah.
At that time.
Thank you. And are these, are these considered a full re-roof quote, or just the, the work to extend the warranty?
That would be a full rework. That is the entire project as projected right now.
Okay.
Thank you. And obviously, any board member, feel free to, if you have questions in the next, you know, couple weeks while you're reviewing this stuff, you know where to direct it.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think the most important piece to remember is that this is a, a living, breathing document. It's, it's a little bit counterintuitive to approve a 10-year plan annually, because we know it changes so much year to year. But the projects that have been identified in the next few years are within our budget, and we'll keep that going there for that. So, but I, I think that when it comes to our larger facility conversation from our last work session, I didn't want to leave that unaddressed for tonight, so we think about what the next steps could be as the board, or process.
All right, any other, yeah, any other comments? Yeah, any other comments or questions about the facility part of your report? Okay, continue.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So the next piece I'd like to share with you is, I appreciate very much the, the evaluation and the feedback that the board has provided, just one sheet, yeah. Board has provided it last month to me as I set my annual goals. So what I wanted to share with you this evening was my proposed goals for the 23, 24 school year for your review. These will come to you for action in August. And so they're for you, they're here for your review this evening, and you'll see some, some, excuse me, some patterns here that are consistent with previous years, but also some new things as we're thinking it through. Goal number one, if you recall, this last option was, this last year was the Student Achievement and Vision Card type goal. And so we're setting a goal here with strategic plan implementation for here with the goal of continuing to work with the school board to achieve the vision card goals as per the district plan with the performance, evidence of performance measures listed there for your consideration with that piece there. Holding me accountable, this is the accountability part that we talked about in the three-year four governance plan. So when you, when you talk about why we haven't yet placed the, all the objectives on the back, because that's what the vision card creates, that's what the operational plan creates, that then this evaluation process helps you hold me accountable too, with that piece too. I mean, the engagement remains a goal for me, and it, because I think it's a goal that we've talked about in multiple years, and based on your feedback, it's just an ongoing goal that we always have to achieve, try to be better at. But this, participating in community engagement events and partnerships, and engaging in regular media outreach, enhance district communication, those are goals we've had in the past, but we'll keep working on those and continue getting better. The significant change is based on your board feedback to me, which would be item C there, which continuing to work with the school board and the facilities committee particularly to determine the next steps in facilities planning, to get, to get, if you go to measure an evidence of performance for, engage the school board in community engagement activities such as event attendance or listening sessions. We just talked about that in the three-year agenda, what that could look like. One of the things I heard loud and clear in the, in the feedback was, you're doing a nice job with community engagement, how can we help you? Let us help you, just ask. And how to involve us more as school board members in that process. So setting that as a goal, I feel like at times, for me personally, having it as a goal helps hold me accountable as well, so that I'm not thinking, yeah, I've got this one. No, it's, who can I, I do that with the, this leadership team all the time. Who can we partner with on this project? And so the board's involved in that process as well, for me. Effective and efficient operations, this is of course based a little bit on a strategic plan as well, working with the, the school board and Director Business Services, implementing that budget plan to maintain, you know, a healthy fund balance to serve our students. We know that our, our budget adjustment went as well as it could have this last spring. That's not a one-year thing. We have to just continually, to annually, look at how we operate efficiently and effectively within our means. You know, we talked in our last conversation about, we don't have a voter-approved operating levy in Wasika. And, and we are not going to be considering one until, unless we got to a point where we couldn't offer the programs we need to offer within our means. And the way we do that is by tightening our belt as well as we possibly can, which we did this spring, and still offer the programs we have. So now we don't, we don't need that. So keep working through that. We know for, to serve our community well, an operating levy and a building bond anytime in the near future to each other is not going to be, not, not manageable for our community. So we have to live within our means operationally if building continues to be our, our highest priority. So that's a budget plan, kind of an ongoing thing for me as well. And I'm in a position right now that this school year, hopefully I, I complete the doctoral program and finish that up next spring with graduation. But one of the things I, we put on the goal last year, and I did it more anecdotally, but I'd like to do more formally this year, is really provide those progress reports to the board of, either through my monthly report or through weekly updates of, what is the evidence of learning? What's the impact of school district business? You know, for example, I presented You know, for example, I presented on the 5th of July to a cohort at MSU, the research I'm doing and the preliminary status, and it got enough attention that next Monday I'm asked to give the, give the opening discussion at our Minnesota Education Partnership Meeting, a retreat at, at MSU for all local superintendents. And so local superintendents will hear about my research and what we're learning that way too, even though I haven't started it yet, the idea, figure that part out. But that gets Wasika out there. That gets our name going. And we can utilize those things as well. So I, I, I give these to you for your consideration and any questions I would stand for. Otherwise, we will, we will move forward with our, with our meeting we can, and then we can bring these up for your approval at the August meeting. So you've had a chance to consider them and give feedback.
Any questions or comments right now? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on then to our report from Matthew Moline.
Hello, yes. Just a few items. Obviously this time of year, we're rolling over fiscal years, so a lot of work left to be done in fiscal year 23, but got to keep 24 going, get ready for the school year. With that, things kind of coming onto the radar now. We'll start levy work. And actually LTFM is one of the first COGS in that process. So by doing that tonight, we'll start that and then get into the levy information system. Also, the annual audit is coming up. I was in the portal today and they are starting to make requests, so we'll make sure that gets distributed out to who needs to help with that and get that process rolling. Obviously, field work, I think is in October. I haven't heard the exact date, but I will look into that. But I know, trying to get that final report out to you so you can have that information when it's handy instead of January is, is always helpful. So we'll make sure to expedite as much as we can. I also worked with the staff to get that student verification process started. So if you're lucky enough to have students in the building, you should have got a message from me on Monday. And then the reminder will go out next Monday and then hopefully we're wrapped up by the 28th on that process. As far as the charts and graphs that are presented, I just want to caution that those are very preliminary. Like I said, we're rolling over fiscal years, things take time. Lots of receivables as far as state aid and federal aid still need to be recorded. So those won't be in there yet. So if you're looking at percentages, budget to actual, the reason why those are lagging so far right now is because of that. Same thing on the payable side. A lot of the supplies and the capital expenditures are also affected by the payable process. You know, whenever we get bills in July, August that were for last year, we record those. So those will continue to, to tick up kind of more to the budget that was set would be my assumption. So, but with that, I just, you know, just trying to get settled in, try to meet as many people as I can. I've, I've got lots of meetings set up to kind of check in with various departments and staff. So just trying to get a grasp and continue the excellence that has been, you know, performed out of the office that I've overtaken here. So any, any questions or comments for me?
I just want to say at first I thought we had too many reminders about the student verification. And then I almost forgot and I appreciated all the reminders that I had. Because I saw them in all my different places. I'm like, oh yes, I should do that. So, no, it was good.
Sure. Yeah, and I don't, I guess, yeah, depending how you have it set up, if you're getting a text and a call and an email, I guess I have the same thing with Infinite Campus and so, but.
It's good to get it multiple ways and then, yeah, I just always leave it undone until I finish it.
Sure.
And then, yeah, so that's, it was good.
I believe when we go to the reminder, there's a way to limit it to only people who haven't done it yet. So at least if you, you know, if you have completed, you're not going to get blasted again.
We could get rewarded.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments for Matt? Okay, thank you.
Perfect.
All right, moving on then to committee and board member reports. And I wanted to start with our update from our student reps. So even though they're not here, they, they sent me an email to make sure that we know what's going on from a student, student perspective. So Addie says, marching band is kicking up in full gear this week, starting band camp. Very excited but anxious anticipating a lot of hard work. Fall sports are starting soon. Everyone is super excited and anticipating a great season. The fair was a huge success this past week and we are glad we even got to see and talk to a couple of you guys, of us on the board. We also got to hear from our Wasika High School Jazz combo there as well. Other school activities are starting. Yes, already, she says. Student council homecoming and dress up day planning will start soon. And also a thank you to anyone who helped out down at Lake Fest over the 4th of July. It was a huge success and the extra help was appreciated. So that is our report from our student reps and looking forward to working with both of them this year. They, I think they're, they're great additions to the board, so. Continuing down the table, Darren, do you want to give your committee reports?
Trying to think if I had anything lately.
We didn't do policies this month.
Yeah. We had to, I think we rescheduled.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Nice, that makes it easy.
It's been a nice summer.
Good to take it a little easy in the summer, so, yeah. Charlie?
Committee, committee reports, right?
Yes.
And we had negotiations committee yesterday. We just kind of went over the basics of that.
Yep.
Didn't make any decisions or anything. It was just basically understanding what's, what's coming up in the future year, so. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Dave?
Just one more time, I did watch the MSBA seminar today. It was kind of a long one. It went almost an hour and a half. It was entitled 2023 Legislative Impact Update. It was given by Gary Lee, Terry Morrow, Amy Taylor. It talked about revised policies, new policies, in-progress policies, the new student handbook, employment information, a lot of good information. If you get some time sometime and you're so inclined to watch it, go for it.
Thank you.
I also do have the slideshow.
Oh, okay.
So if anyone's interested in not listening to the whole entire hour and a half discussion that wants to just see the slides, I could, I have the hard copy from when I went to that meeting and I could scan that into next week's update for everybody too if they wanted that.
That would probably be useful just to have that.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Alyssa?
The evaluation committee, we met on that yesterday. There were a handful of ideas for the board, some recommendations for the board. If you guys want to jump in on those or if we're going to, how much in detail we plan on going, do you have a whole list?
I have a summary, kind of.
Okay, I'll let, yeah, I'll let you read your summary then. I'm not going to go into that.
I, I think everything was covered.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, I just had negotiations and then evaluation committees. So everyone should have a copy of everyone's evaluation. So some of those comments are really good to read and to give ideas for our next, this next year's board goals. I do think the work that we did tonight should also help us think about what goals we want to have specifically for next year. So think about that. I am planning our August workshop, we will have some time to flesh out what we want those goals to be. Generally, we gave our goals a rating of effective. Some things that came out of how we as a board can be better, be to better engage with the public. Perhaps we can use our own social media or the board website to share recognitions or what is going on with the board. We kind of talked about some of those things a little bit earlier. Also discussed was ways that we could improve the new member board packet and if that process should be a new goal for the year or if we can assign that to the superintendent or a board committee or an individual board member or something like that. So again, we can talk about that at our August workshop, how we would like that process to continue. We discussed that perhaps some things that were board goals have now become standard work, such as supporting the superintendent to achieve his goals, evaluating the superintendent and expectations that board members be MSBA trained. I don't know if those need to be actual annual goals. And then Sherry did put those on our operational plan or, or three-year plan. So I don't know if we need to have those as specific goals anymore. But they were good while they were there and now we've kind of made those standard things. Also suggested finding a balance between MSBA training and then professional development that the district could assist the board with. So thinking about professional development ideas that we might want as a board. And then as I said, we'll use our August workshop to establish board goals for the upcoming year. Do I, anything else that you guys can think of? All right, so that was our, that was it. So moving on then to recognitions and positive board feedback. So you want to start?
Sure. Well, it's, you know, a lot of us here sat at the fair and I thought that was a great opportunity to, to talk with people in the community. And Caitlin setting the booth up, that was great. Answering some of the picture questions and, well, it was good.
Great, thank you. Charlie?
Well, I've been to a couple of soccer games. Granddaughter playing there. I see sports are, are ramping up. The boys have been out in South Dakota. I had a football camp out there and it seems like they're in, in, in the gym or in the weight room working every morning, you know, so they're busy there. Last night I was outside doing some, doing some workout on my lawn and it was quarter to nine and the band was still going full force. I could hear them there, so the kids, them kids are really, really paying their dues. They're going to, I think they're going to have a great season and it looks like they're starting off that way. So, you know, just, and summer's going by really quick, really quick, so.
Yes.
I'm not ready for, I'm not ready for fall, but, yeah, so anyhow.
Thank you.
I just have one. I want to mention Pam Dyke. Pam has been an employee of Wasika Public Schools for over 40 years, mostly as a pair, I believe. You just don't have people like that anymore. So just want to acknowledge Pam and all she's done for the school district and for the kids that she's worked with all these years and wish her well in her retirement.
Thank you. And I'm going to miss her as a crossing guard at. So, yes. I popped into both WIS and the high school this last week. I don't know what they all had going on at WIS, but the gym was packed with air mattresses and so something with band, they had a lot of band kids out there, so that was fun to see. And then the high school, I was able to volunteer some time and watch some open gym there. They had, Mr. Anderson had quite a good turnout for basketball. I think he had 18 boys there, so it was fun to just sit and watch them. Thank you.
I just would like to congratulate to our soccer program and soccer team, Boys Day. U-18, 19, and U-14 made it to state and both teams got second place. It's very close to be champions, but, yeah.
I was going to mention the fair, but you did a nice job sharing that. But I, I do want to say there's so many things going on in Wasika summer, in the summer and lots of ways to keep our kids engaged. But I personally want to shout out to Connelly Turek and his team of coaches for their, three times a week, their strength and conditioning class. I think they have four different sessions, three times a week, and they have a ton of kids out there for, and this is for all 712 athletes. And so I really appreciate a, a great way to keep kids busy and, and together in the summertime and it has really become a well-organized program, so I appreciate that.
So we hosted a drum line, that's what those were.
Got it.
Mankato had their thunder of drums at the, at the college through, so they have drum lines coming from all over the country and give, have a, have a performance one night. And they needed some extra, so the last two years now, we've hosted one of the lines that Devon Lawrence is connected to. And so we, we're, they hang out in our gym and, and those couple nights. And it's a great way to serve our community in a different way.
That is neat. All right, ready to move on? I feel like it's been a long night. Yes?
I met, I met the new ag teacher. She was at, she was at the fair in the, in the FVA, in the FVA booth there, so I'm meeting her, so. I'm not, I'm not processing this, so. Good.
Great. All right, action items. And I just want to make note, we have a few resolutions that require a roll call. So if I forget to ask a roll call, please shout at me, so. And Caitlin, in, in the description of these, where it does require a resolution, she's put in there exactly what needs to be said. So thank you Caitlin for that. So can we begin with item A? Can I have someone make a motion?
I move we accept, approve acceptance of received gifts and donations.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion?
That covers all of our current student meal debt.
Thank you.
So we don't have any current students anymore that would be carrying meal debt into this fall. And so that was, that was very generous.
It was.
Yes.
Somebody, we have an anonymous donor for that?
Correct.
Is that my correct answer?
Yes, that's right.
Took care of him.
Yep.
Perfect.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, we will call for a vote and this is a roll call, so Caitlin, please call the roll.
Dave Dunn?
Yes.
Alyssa Bowers?
Yes.
Adina Mansfield?
Yes.
Baron Kruger?
Yes.
Charlie Creed?
Yes.
Julie Anderson?
Yes. All right, motion carries unanimous. Item B is to acknowledge our newly tenured staff. The following teachers have obtained their tenure. Stephanie Bema, Sharon Bothan, Kira Fosberg, Ashley Graham, Allison Holm, Rachel Ingles, Samuel Janz, Austin Nagel, Kelsey Palm, Shaylen Salgado, Abigail Sinkovich, David Schmidt, Taylor, and Taylor Schmuck. So congratulations to all of them and we are very grateful to have you here in our district. Can I get a motion for item C?
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution for Minnesota State High School League membership. About to read something.
You sure do. But starting with the let it be resolved.
Okay, where are we at? Can I decline?
Take the long.
Walked into that one, didn't I? Okay, approved 2023, 2024 resolution for Minnesota State High School League membership. This is an annual requirement for Minnesota State High School League membership. Wasika Public School recommends approval of the following resolution. Let it be resolved that the governing board or entity of independent school district 829 Wasika Public Schools located in the state of Minnesota delegates the control, supervision, and regulation of interscholastic activities and athletics referred to in Minnesota statute section 128 C dot 01 to the Minnesota State High School League. And so hereby certifies to the state commissioner of education as provided for by Minnesota statutes. Further resolve that the school listed is authorized by this, the governing board of said school district or school to renew its membership in the Minnesota State High School League and participate in the approved interscholastic activities and athletics sponsored by said league and its various subdivisions. Further resolve that this governing board or entity hereby adopts the constitution, bylaws, policies, rules, and regulations of said league and all amendments thereto as the same as are published in the latest edition of the league's official handbook, on file at the office of the school district or school, or as appears on the league's website as the minimum standards governing participation in said league-sponsored activities and athletics. Further, the administration and responsibility for determining student eligibility and for the supervision of such activities and athletics are assigned to the official representatives identified by this governing board and/or entity.
I have a first, could I get a second?
I'll second.
First and a second, any discussion? Just as noted, this is just an annual requirement to maintain Minnesota State High School League's membership, so. All right, if there is no further discussion, I will call for a vote. And since this is a resolution, this is also a roll call, so Caitlin, please call the roll.
Dave Dunn?
Yes.
Alyssa Bowers?
Yes.
Adina Mansfield?
Yes.
Baron Kruger?
Yes.
Charlie Creed?
Yes.
Julie Anderson?
Yes. Motion carries unanimous. Item D then is related to this, so if I, and we need to make a motion for this appointment, is that correct?
Correct.
If I can get someone to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of the MSHSL reps.
Second.
First and a second, and they are listed in your packet. Any discussion, or do I need to read? Okay. Any discussion, questions? Okay. Moving on then, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item E?
I'll, I'll motion approve Minnesota School Boards Association and renewal of MSBA policy service.
I'll second that. First and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item F?
I can make a motion to approve letter of agreement between Minnesota Valley Action, Action Council and ISD 0829 Wasika Public Schools.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? I did just want to ask, what, what do they do here in the building? Or, because they, because they have a couple spaces that they use? And I was just curious how they use them.
It's, it's work coaching.
Okay.
It's job coaching and working with students with disabilities to get out in the community.
Yeah. Is it part of the transition program, or is it?
That's who they work most directly with.
Okay. That's what I thought. I was just curious. Yeah, thank you. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item G?
I'll make a motion to approve the revised 2023-24 fee schedule.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item?
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution in conjunction with ten-year-long-term facilities maintenance plan expenditure and revenue plans.
Then you have to read it. I'm not even forcing him.
Okay, I was a short.
Yeah, just the where, whereas, and, yeah.
Okay. Whereas, to qualify for long-term facilities maintenance revenue, Minnesota statutes 123B dot five nine five subdivision four states a school district must annually adopt and approve a ten-years facility plan by July 31st for commissioner approval. Whereas the school district has developed a ten-year-long-term, excuse me, facilities maintenance plan consistent with this law, therefore be it resolved that the school board of Independent School District Number 829 approves and adopts the attached ten-year-long-term facilities maintenance plan for fiscal year 25 on the 20th of July 2023.
Thank you. I have a first. Could I get a second? I will second. First and a second. Do we want to explain a little bit, or?
So I, I wonder if we, should we modify the, I didn't catch this, we should modify the resolution to say FY24? Because that's what we're moving into fiscal year 24.
I think it says FY25 because the levy revenue is that leg.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. That, that's good. That's why we brought him around. Very good. All right. So, Ms. Trina, is there anything you want to highlight, or any questions the board has before we, we take action on that particular?
In which, which document in front of us? Just, is it the two-page one?
Yeah, the short one. Yeah, the revenue and expenditure. That's what we send to the state.
Yep, gotcha.
I have nothing at this time to highlight. However, if anybody has any questions, I'm sure they could direct them to Mr. Huthspeth, and I'll be happy to answer them.
Yes. I can just get, I mean, I think that these numbers tie into that one, right?
Correct.
And I just, you know, from sitting here brief, I'm just curious, do we typically, like, with the abatement process of stuff, do we typically do that just to do it throughout and try and just get rid of everything, or do we do it because we got upcoming projects that it's going to affect? Or it's, what do we?
I would say a little bit of both, but.
A little bit of both. When we have to replace flooring, we are required to abate any of those surfaces, like our tile, when we want to put in carpet, or when we want to replace it with other tile. We do have it throughout our building in certain places for insulation. In that instance, like in our tunnels, or in our roofing areas, we do have a requirement to eliminate that. And that's been a long-going process.
Right. Just for the sake of keeping the levy consistent for taxpayers, you just do a little bit every year. Typically, it's how that works. Yeah.
Any other questions?
That's a good question.
It was a good question.
I just, I was just curious, because I know it usually generates projects or whatever, replacements, and I didn't know what we had going on here to piece with it.
Yep, very good.
I would like to point out, just in case you are trying to compare the, the summary to the expanded sheet, the summary, if you notice in the header, does say include Fund Six, and actually in this printout is cut off. But, so there is some projects in there that are just spending up the bond funds that weren't on the big expanded sheet, just because we wanted to keep that to the general fund and, you know, so if you're, if you're following along and wondering why there's a difference, that, that's why. And we don't have a lot of Fund Six, which is the construction project fund to spend, but, and, and hopefully those will be gone by the end of fiscal year 24.
We should be just about done with that, right?
Yeah, and it was in our preliminary budget to spend that down for this year.
You have to spend it by a certain time.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you for pointing that out, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, good catch.
Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none then, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Oopsa! See, I told you to shout at me. Never mind. Caitlin, would you please call the roll?
Dave Dunn?
Yes.
Alyssa Bowers?
Yes.
Adida Mansfield?
Yes.
Theron Kruger?
Yes.
Charlie Creed?
Yes.
Julie Anderson?
Yes. All right, motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item I? It was round I, right? Yes.
I can make a motion to approve LTFM statement of assurances.
I'll second that. First and a second. Any discussion?
This is a statement that assures we will follow the regulations and rules and laws with LTFM that, now pending your approval, I will send in tomorrow to the state.
If there's no further discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item J?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2023-24 school handbooks as presented.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? Other than, thank you for getting us as many ahead of time as possible, so.
And anytime, and keep in mind, anytime you have feedback all throughout the year, please send it to me, so I can get that to the building principals. Because when it comes to the, getting this process approved in the summertime, it can feel so compacted. At times, like, do I even, am I even really impacting anything at the, it's already the end of July. So I trust, I'm glad we were able to get it to you a couple weeks ago. But if you have ideas throughout the school year, please don't feel like you have to wait till next summer to share. Yeah.
I need to.
I do have one question. In that seminar today that I watched online, they did talk about some changes to the student handbook that the legislature passed. Can you talk to that?
Yeah, there, there is, so, there's no changes necessary to the student handbook. Because our handbooks always involve following policy and law. And so the policy regarding, regarding exclusion, and some disciplinary processes, being able to not be tested for CBD, being able to have tobacco if you're an American Indian student in districts, those are all things that our policy committee will be wrestling with in the next, next few months. But our handbook says we follow these policies. So we shouldn't need to adjust our handbook. Some handbooks call out the rules that those districts all choose in addition to their policy, which is duplicative, not only necessarily to do both. So that's the process there. And MSBA is trying to sell a, a model student handbook for people to use, which could be helpful, but for Morro de Winona, I don't think those student handbooks need to be identical. So I think if we continue to work with what we need in Wasika, we're in better shape than that. But, makes sense?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item K?
I'll, I'll motion to approve strategic plan update.
Second.
First and a second. And just to clarify, that was the.
Short version.
Yes, the short, the short, what did you guys call it, though?
Yeah, the one-pager.
The one-pager, yeah. That you presented to us today. And this is kind of a strategic plan refresh. Yes.
Correct, yeah.
Any other discussion or questions?
Well, just as we talked about in our meeting today, that's the beginning of the process to help move forward with keeping our district moving towards accountability. And I, my observation as superintendent is that there are districts that can be hesitant to do this because the accountability that comes with it. So thank you for your, your work with that, and thank you for letting us do our work to bring our ideas with you because it doesn't make our job any easier. You know, in fact, you know, the accountability only gets higher. But I think that's only better for our kids. So thank you for that.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item L?
I'll make a motion that we approve disposal of Project Lead the Way materials.
I'll second that. First and a second. Any discussion? Do we still do Project Lead the Way in those grades? No, not at all. Okay.
That has been replaced with the Siemens program.
Right.
That, that Mr. Kuschel is working through.
Well, I knew that that was at the high school, but that's all the way down into elementary as well?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, no further discussion. I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. And can I get a motion for item M?
I'll make a motion to approve the awarding milk bid.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion?
Just a reminder, we rejected the bids at the last meeting because of an issue we had with one of our contracted services. As we reinitiated the bid process, the, the sole provider that could meet our needs did bid, and that's positive. And so that's what we present to you tonight.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. All right, and that brings us to the end of our action items. Upcoming items and reminders, our next work session is Thursday, August 3rd, and our next regular meeting is Thursday, August 17th. And then right around the corner is school getting started. So, yeah. Anything else? Good?
Thank you for, for a great afternoon and a lot of work. I appreciate that. Yeah.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion to adjourn.
All right, I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.